It's gone.
All right, good. Now we can start.
All right, very good. Then we will officially call this meeting to order. Annual notice of this meeting was provided to the Star Ledger, Home News Tribune, and Highland Park Planet on January 31st, 2023. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on June 6th, 2023, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hbr.com and on the Golden Board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on June 6th, 2023. It has remained continuously posted there as required by law. This is the June 8th, 2023 Highland Park Planning Board meeting. We are meeting in person. And with that, Jen, if you'll take a little part, please. Ms. Hahn?
Here.
Mr. Bresser?
Here.
Mr. Chin?
Here.
Ms. Hat Hazy? Mr. Hale?
Here.
Mr. Lennaros?
Here.
Mr. Malin? Mr. Perlman?
Here.
Mr. Stern, Pardell?
Here.
Mr. Isadorfer?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Stenza?
Here.
Mr. Koch?
Here.
All right, we're going to take things out of order, and we're going to do our referral to us to conduct an area need of redevelopment investigation of certain properties identified as Block 2, 202, Lots 1, 13, 19, 31, 37, 38, 39, so on and so forth. This came to us originally two meetings ago. We missed the first meeting because it didn't make it onto our agenda, and we adjourned it for the second meeting to give members of the board the opportunity to review the lots at issue referred to us. So I'm going to ask Roger to give us his review of what our role is with regards to this resolution.
Yes, it's my understanding pursuant to the law under the redevelopment and housing law that there has been a resolution, which you've all seen from the governing body to you, asking that you end up authorizing an investigation of these properties for purposes of determining whether or not they meet a standard for redevelopment. It is my understanding that that is not a request, that is a mandate under Section 6 of the statute, which is 48, call it 12, but it is 6. It indicates that the municipality shall, and I emphasize "shall" by resolution, authorize the planning board to undertake a preliminary investigation to determine whether the proposed area is in need, is a redevelopment area according to the criteria set forth in section so and so. And I think that's the relevant material that you need to be aware of. So it's not a question that you are authorized to decide whether or not you're going to investigate it. I think you are required to investigate it. Once the investigation is done, then you, as the board, will have an opportunity to ask questions, as will the public, with regard to the results of that investigation and whether or not you believe that the lots in question meet the criteria, and therefore it would be referred back to the governing body as an area need of redevelopment, or not, as the case may be, depending upon, one, what the result of the study is, or, two, what your determination is in relation to that study.
Okay. Well, before we figure out what exactly it is we're needing to do with this referral, Chris, do you want to explain to us what the lots are that are being referred to us to look at?
Sure, I think the question was asked logically. Which lots are they? It's hard to visualize that with text on the resolution. So this point forward, I think it would be beneficial to the board and the public that would prepare maps like this or part of your agenda packet. So I included a map, color-coded, and the blue area is designated lots back in 2005, was designated area need redevelopment. Back then, prior to 2013, it does qualify for condemnation. Recall, a couple of years ago, you went through a planning exercise to do a redevelopment plan for just those borough-owned lots. That's the area that's hatched in that blue. Again, so it qualifies as area need redevelopment. And prior to that, in 2016, as you all recall, the entire municipality is in area need of rehabilitation. So going back to the 2021 redevelopment plan area, as you recall, the Borough issued an RFP and entertained potential redevelopers to file proposal. And one of the proposals toward this particular track was accepted and currently in negotiations on the design. I don't think we're quite there on the financial aspects of it. We're very, very early in the process. And I understand that the redeveloper has constantly been looking at other properties. That sort of made us think about, well, if we're going to do that exercise, we might as well, similar to how we did for the Stop the Shop site, let's look at the expanded area from block, edge of block, edge of block. As you recall, in 2005, it kind of had this short checkerboard pattern, the why doesn't that go all the way to the street corner. This gives us an opportunity to really investigate, first of all, if the properties do qualify as area need redevelopment, in this case, non-condemnation. And if they do, then they can be pulled into redevelopment plan all under a redevelopment area designation. Otherwise, as of right now, we can do an amended redevelopment plan under a rehab designation for those lots in yellow. But it just makes sense to, if we're going to consider lots that are in the redevelopment area, that may potentially have the ability to expand it through the redevelopment designation, just to make it a little bit easier, including the financial aspects if that's pursued. So frankly, not much has changed. It does authorize a plan, per se, it's just to do a study, which the council has authorized the study, required, mandated in the study being done. Boroughs, sorry, the planning boards, resolution they have in front of you is simply to authorize L R K, my firm, being with me to do the study on your behalf. To really summarize it, the properties that we're looking at are really on the end of the lot, and other lots to the south and to the east that may potentially offer better benefits for access to a redevelopment area. We don't know who qualifies, but that's why the Borough Council has to be done instantly, ask us to look at that for those processes.
Thank you.
Okay, do any members of the board have any questions?
Yeah, so I thank you for the map. I was amused at the last meeting when this came up. I'm now still amused, but in a more informed way. So what do the council or you envision would be accomplished if we determined that these were, these indeed, indeed, qualify as areas in need of redevelopment? What's your whole planning purpose of this?
I simply put, we don't know yet. We're not ready to do a redevelopment plan.
So why bother? You know, this is just, you know, I'm puzzled. Why we're doing this if we don't have any gold in mind?
Well, I think as I mentioned before...
I agree, it makes them asymmetric. But making them asymmetric in itself has no virtue. It only has a virtue if we think that something will be accomplished by doing it.
Well, I think the possibility to expand to the street corners, squaring off lots, potentially better access to side streets and through rear, is a thought process of expanding the study area. Again, we might find that the study, and through the study, that lots do not qualify as area need redevelopment. And again, we can still rely on area need rehabilitation designation and still do a plan as assumed to be envisioned by the Borough. Again, we're still very, very early in discussions with the redeveloper about the designated area through the RFP process. So as part of the negotiation process, the thought is perhaps we should expand the study since we may potentially have other properties that would be useful as part of the study. In fact, that's one of the main reasons why I did area need rehabilitation designation, because the current 2005 designation is checkerboarded, which means that if you wanted to do a plan, you're either in it or out of it. And if you have areas, project areas, straddling area need redevelopment, and one is not, you couldn't do a project. So this is just part of the many tools we try to utilize to be able to broaden our powers that be in order to really for something that's more conducive to area.
I defer to Mr. Thomas, a little judge on all of this. But I have to confess, my form of this is clearly not satisfied.
Steve, I appreciate your thoughts, and my opinion is that once the governing body does do a resolution pursuant to the redevelopment law, there's not really a lot of leeway for the planning board to say, well, we're not going to take it up because we don't think it's got any efficacy. I think that the reality is that the planning board has the obligation to start that plan. Now, that having been said, once the plan comes back, your comments then obviously become very relevant. It's a situation where it may very well turn out that after the study comes back, all or some of the lots may be determined not to be in need of redevelopment. They may all be determined to be in need of redevelopment, and either you or other members of the board may disagree. And there may be debate, may very well be a debate about that during the course of any public hearing in relation to the adoption of the plan. So I appreciate the thoughts. I'm not trying to minimize them, I think they're important. But I just think it's, they are preliminary at this stage, and they should be held until such time as the study is done. You know, I guess I understand if it turns out that at the end of the study, it's determined that none of the parcels are in need of redevelopment, then maybe in a sense, it was a waste of time.
I'm actually concerned about the opposite situation. I'm concerned is we make the technical determination that they're all in need of redevelopment, as indeed many lots are in Highland Park. And yet, I still don't know what the point of it was.
Well, I would assume that there is going to be then a determination. One, let's take that scenario. If it turns out that all of the lots are in fact in need of redevelopment, then what ends up happening, and everybody agrees that that's the case, then what I understand will be the process, and I'm sure you're just as familiar with it as I am. That recommendation and that study will then go back to the governing body. They will then authorize, presumably the planners, to end up coming up with a plan for that area to determine what actually might very well be a good thing to be done on these lots along Raritan Avenue. As you are, I'm sure, aware, there has been a determination some time ago to try to make Raritan Avenue, number one, an upgrade from what it has been in the past. And I guess there's always a determination of what upgrade means, but nonetheless, to try to make it more economically viable, among other things, and also, so that would be one of the issues that would have to be discussed. So I think that the question becomes, you know, what will be that plan? I think that members of the public will have an opportunity to have input, members of the planning board will have input, and quite frankly, I think members of the planning board will have a great deal of input in terms of what the plan ought to be from a good planning perspective.
I defer to you, little judge.
Oh, thank you.
Jim, could you put on the record the definition between rehabilitation and redevelopment?
Well, the both forms of designations were, still do a redevelopment plan, revision, and specific zoning design standards for, to facilitate a project. As to the determination process, they are slightly different. One, through area need redevelopment, whether it's condemnation or non-condemnation, involves more of a scrutinized test. For example, are the lots dilapidated or have certain features that are unwholesome to living or working apartments? The rehabilitation designation, it's more of a practical analysis. It's what we did here in Highland Park, and I also did in touching that majority of the lots in the designated area, in this case, in the target municipality, had water or sewer infrastructure of more than fifty, or averaging more than fifty years old. But one's more of a practical analysis, the other's more of a detailed lot-by-lot investigation. Ultimately, you still have the ability to rebuild plans in that process, as well as rehabilitation programs. The key difference between the two designations is that through an area need rehabilitation designation, you can do up to a five-year pilot, cannot use condemnation. Whereas through an area need redevelopment designation, you can go up to a 30-year pilot and can use condemnation so long as the resolution authorizing it specifies whether or not using condemnation.
Thank you.
Jen?
Chris, the existing redevelopment, the 2021 redevelopment plan, it's in the hatched blue, that right now only has like one point of access, off of Magnolia, I think. And would you, given you and the council talked about the viability of a redevelopment area shaped the way it is, is there a thought that looking at other parcels would enhance the viability of the site for redevelopment? As part of the consideration?
Well, that was part of the process, that then we had this opportunity that we should look at different access points. And I think that's why they chose lots 1 and 31. That way, primary access doesn't have to have on Raritan Avenue.
Which we should be discouraged, you have the...
It's current access to Magnolia, but it's undersized in terms of vehicular access, and frankly, there's a lack of buffering into residential majors. By including Lot 19, if that's feasible, that would potentially allow for more standard entryway and better buffering. Of course, that would have required, if it's pulled into a plan and arms-length agreement to purchase that lot. Same thing for Lot 13, it's just, why not? We could try and get access off of South Third, if that's feasible. And we're trying to find a different access point. I think focusing, I think in the end, found that access, all access coming off Magnolia would not be conducive to a good project, and not, of course, ever. Part of the rationale for expanding these areas was really to deal with access, at most potentially.
And I would just add, in addition to the potential ways that this could assist in different access to the site, 37, 38, and 39 are right next to what we are fully intending will be a plaza. And so having access to that is having next to, because it's so, it's right next to the potential plaza, that's another potential significant benefit by including this. But again, before we include it, we have to study before we say yes or no. So discussing about what's possible is significantly premature right now as we, I think, need to just sort of see if it qualifies, and then after it qualifies, then we move forward from there.
There definitely seems to be a sort of chicken-on-the-egg kind of public policy when it comes to approaching this. But Roger, let me ask you, if we've been directed to undertake the study, and it's really council's directive that we must do it, what is it that we're voting on tonight?
We're voting to authorize the implementation of the study by the planning officer of Looney Brick's Kiss, essentially, Chris.
All right, then, very good.
I have a question before we move on. I recall hearing that the Borough was in the past focused on redeveloping areas that it already had control of through ownership, or where the owner had expressed some willingness to entertain a redevelopment proposal. With these proposed study areas that are in front of us right now, is that still the case?
So can you repeat the first part regarding ownership?
Yes, that redevelopment in the Borough was emphasizing borough-owned properties, or properties where the owner was already interested or willing to entertain a redevelopment.
So from my understanding, it's a combination of the two. There may be some parcels that are not under the same ownership of the conditional redeveloper. But I think generally speaking, it doesn't matter. If the owner's a lot, we're really focusing on tax lot numbers for the study purposes. But I think generally speaking, it does make it a lot easier to develop the property, if there's one, obviously.
Maybe, let me try another way. It's, as Chris said, some of them are owned by people who have said they are interested in doing this. Some of them are not. So that's, but that doesn't mean that they...
Will never be.
Will never be? We haven't, you know, we're so early in the process, but, so it is, it's not an either or, it's a yes-and.
I would also add that, if you recall for the Stop the Shop site, we studied the entire, basically, block face along Raritan Avenue. But when we did a redevelopment plan, we only focused on Stop the Shop sites. So just because it's been designated, doesn't mean they're all going to be included to a redevelopment plan. It's available, and it's a tool to use if the right project comes along. But I do agree, Madam Chair, it is a little bit of chicken and egg. And I do respect your comments, Mr. Isadorfer, because it's, you always have to ask why we're doing this. Sometimes we don't know, but we have to study because it could lead to better end product.
Okay. Any else? All right, so with that, I'll solicit...
I think, yeah, I think you need a motion to authorize the implementation of the study to be conducted by the offices of Looney Brick's Kiss. I don't think we need to have Chris named necessarily, but...
No, I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Chin?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pardell. Jen, I think we need a roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Bresser?
Yes.
Mr. Chin?
Yes.
Mr. Isadorfer?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Lennaros?
Yes.
Mr. Perlman?
Yes.
Mr. Stern, Pardell?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Hahn? Yes. Okay, that takes us to the resolution memorialization.
Yes, Madam Chair, there has been some discussion that occurred. Unfortunately, it's late as 5 o'clock this afternoon. There has been a resolution, however, of some of the language, and I would refer the board members, at least according to my draft, and sometimes it doesn't come across that way when you end up emailing it. It comes to different pages, but hopefully it's the right page. What I had is Page 8, it is the second full complete paragraph, and it is the second sentence of that. That second sentence currently reads, so that you identify where we're talking about. "As part of those reviews, the applicant agrees to submit the LSRP report to the Environmental Commission for review and for informational purposes only." There were some questions that were raised by the representatives from the Environmental Commission, that there was also some agreement that some additional plans would be submitted. I had conversations with Alan, and we talked about certain things called a mitigation plan and a mitigation final report. There was some concern as to whether or not those terms were terms of art, or whether or not they were somehow either misleading or otherwise. So we ended up having a conference call with the representatives from the applicant, and I included Mr. Wolfson, who's the attorney, as well as the engineer, and then there was a gentleman, and I apologize, I just remember his name was Mark, but he identified himself, or he was identified to me as the former commissioner of the MJDEP. He happens to be in the employ of whatever the name of the company is, and I forget the name frankly. I know it's JSM, but I don't know if that's a formal name.
Edgewood Properties.
What is it called?
Edgewood Properties.
Thank you very much, Bruce. In any event, we were able then, as a result of that conference call, to get some more specificity as to what was, what I think the Environmental Commission was really looking for. So as a result, I've jotted down, and it seems to have been acceptable to both Alan and to the applicant, that that sentence would be eliminated, and it would now read, "The applicant agreed to submit the LSRP report and the remedial action work plan and the remedial investigative report to the Environmental Commission for informational purposes only. Upon issuance of remedial action outcome, or the RAO, a copy of that will be sent to the Borough and to the Environmental Commission for informational purposes only." So that language would then be substituted for the sentence that I've just read. In addition, there is a condition that reflects that, and that is Condition Number 4 on Page 12. And then that language that is in there will now be eliminated, and that language that I just substituted will be included in that condition. So those are the only modification that I would offer to you that you have not otherwise received. And with that, Madam Chair, I would offer the resolution for your consideration.
Thank you.
Not yours, but the whole of it's ours.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments on the resolution, Mike Bush?
Just to clarify exactly where we're talking about, because I think, as you said, some of the pages were a little bit different. Let's, let me do this. Could you just tell us the sentence before...
Sure, I'll be happy to do that. That's how we, frankly, that's how we got to that point. If you look at, it'll be somewhere around Page 7 or 8.
It's on Page 8, the most recent one.
Okay. According to what I've been told by the chair, it's apparently on Page 8, the most recent chair. But nonetheless, the paragraph begins, "The board also took into account the comments of the Environmental Commission report dated November 21st, 2022, as well as the Middlesex County Fire Marshal report dated March 1st, 2022, and the report of the Highland Park Shactree Advisory Commission dated March 9th, 2022." Does that help you?
Got it, thank you.
And next sentence is the one we're eliminating and taking. So hopefully that helps. Thank you.
All right, anyone have comments, other judge?
Yeah, thank you. So it is gratifying to see that the applicant is going to provide a totlot on the site, actually, it's on Page 8, that very next sentence, that fair question. And then it's followed through in the condition of approval number 6. The applicant should advise the plan to include a totlot to be reviewed, and then a location approved by the Borough Planner and Engineer. And I guess, just for my own education, is what will the town planner, board planner, and engineer look at? And one of the questions is, what is a totlot? And maybe just as a communication, totlot, usually for ages 2 to 5, that's generally the term of a totlot, that's the age that we're talking about. And, you know, for the, for the, you know, the site, the children on site, generally, a totlot includes a place structure with one or more additional resanding equipment, which generally takes a size of somewhere between 25 by 25 foot or 25 by 30 foot, you know, area. So I don't know if, like, what are the things you're going to be looking for, Chris and Bruce, that will meet that standard? I guess just...
I'll find it's do a, something probably what you're referring to, is do a study or review of American Planning Association documents and the guidelines, and probably urban design. First of all, figure out the capacity first, and then what design would be appropriate for that size.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Appreciate it.
I have a couple of technical...
Sure.
So on Page, Page 10, we addressed the structural variance.
Yes.
It seems to be better practice to actually specify the basis on the structural variance. I doubt there's a C2 variance that we're granted.
Correct, correct.
I think it'd be better practice is to say that.
That's a good point. I'll be happy to modify the language to incorporate that.
If there's a reviewing court, the reviewing court says, and what kind of variance they were asking for, and what kind of variance was granted.
Steve, thank you very much, I think it's a good point.
My other sort of technical comment is, we've made extensive reference to the engineers' reports. Without the engineers' reports in hand, it is hard to figure out what this resolution means. It seems to me, again, it's just a matter of practice. If we're going to do that, if we're going to refer to the engineers' reports by paragraph, it seems better to incorporate them by reference and attach them to the document.
You know, I've had that situation.
Just because someone picks this up, it should be a freestanding document. They should be able to pick it up and say, oh, I understand what they're talking about. I know what is and I'm supposed to do, rather than having to call up the clerk and say, do you know where this document is? Has it been lost?
I think your point is absolutely well taken, and I have attempted to do that in the past, and it was not done simply because I was trying to get this resolution. However, I think it's a very good suggestion, and I have done it in the past, and I think it's appropriate to do it in this case, because I agree with you, resolution should be freestanding. Without, I mean, the only thing that's, obviously, you can't incorporate is the maps, but that's, and I think your point is well taken. I'm happy to incorporate that. So in addition...
I think all you need is one more sentence. That says, the following, the following engineers' reports are incorporated by reference.
And I think it's going to be not only, excuse me for interrupting, I think it's not only going to be Bruce's report, but also Chris's. So that's fine, not a problem. Rather than any reference that it's incorporated by reference, change that language to indicate those reports are annexed here too as Exhibit A, B, or 1 and 2, or whatever I choose.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
I only wanted to comment, first page, second from the bottom. Lot 25 through 27.
Was that right?
Well, thank you, Chris. I appreciate that. I do that because I'm referring to this letter in the senior report, which are not going to be appendages to the resolution. All right, anybody else? Alan?
On page five, where we replied about the tree ordinance, you read that, the tree ordinance does not apply because of the court order?
Yes. Yes, I know I had that word, if you could point me, I know I put that in, but I'm not sure.
Bottom of the page.
Bottom of the page, thank you, I got it, thank you.
The court said, you're looking to test it, decides you don't have to pay for the trees.
Yes.
Okay. We'll go along with it. And, where am I going? I think, I think on the same page, you
Page five.
Page five.
Yep.
Steep slope ordinance only applies to open space areas. What do we, what do we mean by open space here? Open space on the site, or?
Yeah, you, you may recall, my rec, my notes reflect the fact that opens, the applicant was asked whether or not they were providing any open space, they indicated that they were not providing any open space
Right.
On the site, therefore, the slope ordinance would not apply. And open space, in my explanation, would be space that would be open generally to the public, and that's why it would require the application of the, of the slope ordinance. They're not, they're not providing any open space to the public, they're just simply providing, whatever they're providing to their own residents.
If the, focus, the steep slope ordinance, in at least my reading, doesn't seem to say that, which is by area of ownership.
Well, I'll, I'll be happy to take another look, but it's my understanding, and quality theory is that was the representation of this being to be drawn in post-remediation, that's why I incorporate it. So I'll take a look at it again, if, if there's a modification of the way.
Okay. Mr. Williams, are you referring to the
Could you speak a little louder, Chris?
Are we referring to the open space requirement in the MFHA coordinates for Buckwood Site?
I always talk about that we have some steep slopes which you can, you can disturb about to a certain percent.
Yes.
Or you get a variance of some sort. And I just didn't understand the logic that's
Oh, so if I recall, the ordinance that was adopted specifically to accommodate development seventy-five units for Buckwood Site has an open space requirement, has the steep slope requirement, but however, those areas that are needed to be disturbed for support retaining walls in a multi-use trail are exempt.
Okay.
So there's a little bit of a recrafting of the language, specific to the Buckwood Site, so it sort of supersede the ordinance.
Therefore, the, the open space, the steep slope ordinance doesn't apply to this situation.
Yes.
Okay. All set.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Roger, I have a question, maybe Bruce and Chris can help. Is, is it unusual to memorialize a resolution so far in advance of any kind of legal settlement or ground breaking or, I mean, we're years away from
The answer is yes. It, 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 it happens, for example, one of my earlier activities was representing the township of Bedminster. And, excuse me, Bedminster was the subject of one of the first affordable housing litigations. I was not originally involved in that during the seventies, but what I was involved in was the implementation of the order that was entered by, geez, it's so long ago, I can't remember the name.
Judge Serpantelli.
No, it wasn't Serpantelli, it was not, it was a judge in Somerset County.
Oh, that's right, yes.
I can't remember his name.
The very first order.
The very first order, yeah, it was, it was issued in seventy-nine, and I became involved with Bedminster in eighty. And it turns out that we had a year and a half, or almost two-year review of a general, what's called a general development plan, and it ultimately got approved at three-thirty in the morning, one particular March night, which I never want to do again, but nonetheless, that hasn't been said, and that was a number of years in advance of them even putting anything in the ground.
We, we actually have to do this within four to five days after we go on this. We don't have any discussion today.
Understood, but I mean, you just, I mean, I'm here over fifteen years, I never saw something like this.
Yeah, well, it's up to the applicant whether or not they wanted to bring their application this earlier, huh? That was their choice. It's actually been out there for over a year.
And, and don't forget that, you know, like every other, well, like large applications, you know, the planning board approval is not the beginning and end goal, it is only one of, you know, thirty-five different approvals that they have to get. So they, what I've been always told by developers, you got to start someplace, and if you don't get the approval from the planning board, what's the point of spending a hundred thousand dollars going to the DEP if you don't get the original approval? So
That's a fair point. And, and you don't think there's any implication of our approval in their lawsuit?
Uh, no.
Settlement?
No, no, not at all.
Okay.
No, and I mean, then, people will tell me, well, you know, now are they going to end up bootstrapping, I've heard this said a number of times, well, now you've given them approval, and you're saying it's subject to the DEP, as an example.
Right.
Well, don't they then try to bootstrap to the DEP and say, hey,
It's in breed.
They gave us an approval, so you guys got to do that.
That's what I would
It is not in my experience at the DEP, it's moved by that ar, argument, and I owe
I have to confess that I've tried that a number of times. And I have never, I have never had it work.
Okay, 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 that's good. That's very sure. But it's a good question.
Any more comments on the resolution? Okay. And with that, we've had a few modifications that we just reviewed, if you want to review them real quick, so we can have a procreate motion?
Sure. I have already indicated the ones that are going to take place on page, what was my page, eight, and condition number four. There was also a modification on page one, which we brought to the lot, being not lot twenty-five, but rather lot twenty-seven. There will also be modifications to page, I believe it was page ten, indicating that I will make a more specific reference to the type of variance, so that we, in the event that any court should ever look at this, that it's a clear understanding of what variance is being authorized. And there will also be an inclusion and a modification of whatever that condition was to indicate that we're not incorporating by reference the reports of, I'll call it for quick sake, for Chris and Bruce's report, but rather appending them as exhibits, presumably A or P or
Then, anyone want to make a motion to adopt the resolution as amended?
I'll make.
You go first, Doc.
Sought it by Alan Williams, seconded by Jeff Perlman, and we take a roll call, please. Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mr. Chin?
Yes.
Mr. Iguodala?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Linares?
Yes.
Mr. Perlman?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Miss Hahn? Yes. All right. Put Scott in the spotlight real quick, anything interesting happening around town?
You're on the right, no, 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 you're on the right. In relation to building.
Yeah, buildings.
We just, we had one zoning application coming for a two-fang lane on South Third.
Okay. Isn't that that empty lot, that
I believe it's that empty lot, yeah.
Oh, wow.
Some lakes reviewing that, from that, actually.
It's hardly doing, I'm building the school, so they made a lot of progress.
There were going to walk, we're going to walk with that.
They're putting brick trades on there.
Yeah, yeah, it's a big building. Yeah, big, but it's all the way in the back, so.
And we lost landscape.
No, 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 the chocolate place is still going. All right, well, unless anyone has any general comments for Scott. All right, then I will open up the meeting for public comments, if there's any members of the public who wish to be heard. Let's see, none have chosen to join us this evening, I will close the public comment section. Anyone have anything else they want to do? All right, how about an motion to adjourn? Anybody?
I'll move.
So, who, second, by, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chris.
Much appreciated.
Good to see everybody.
I was going to ask you